Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this beautiful spring day. We ask your blessing upon everyone here and all of the people in our county. We ask for wisdom as we go forward and make decisions for everyone. In Jesus' name, amen.
The hour being at nine o'clock, I'll call this meeting over. Dick Johnson, would you like to have your class leave us in the pledge?
Certainly.
Go ahead, how do you want it?
I plead the fifth and third of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, everyone has a agenda in front of them for the changes. We need a few changes. Our 10:00 and our 10:15 canceled. So we have Commissioner's scholarships at 10:30. Let's move them up to the 10:00. It'll give us more time for them. Then we have two additions to the content agenda. One is the proclamation declaring May National Preservation Month.
Lucille.
Lucille Dumbo. And the other one is a credit card pre-observation for third rounds. People have had a couple of chances to see that. Is there any other changes or additions to the agenda?
I'd like to add to old business fair and to new business discussion about ambulance.
Any other changes or additions to the agenda? Second. That motion promptly seconded to change the agenda as amended. Is there any discussion?
Can you give me, I'm sorry. Could you give me an idea of what's called a current ambulance?
Fair Board, we attended the RPM meeting at the Fair Board and ambulance. And no notice had been given, after talking with Sheriff Bridges again this morning, no notice, a letter had been given, and that person attended that meeting. I thought we agreed that we were going to get that taken care of.
No, no, I don't think we can discuss that.
Well, then we need to go into executive to discuss it. Okay.
What was the discussion I just talked?
See, someone attended the Fair Board meeting that maybe probably shouldn't have.
Just recently.
No notice had been given to that person from the last meeting. Oh, yeah, that sounds like an executive session issue. Do we need to?
We do a friendly amendment?
Yes.
Friendly amendment to change the motion from fair on old business to a brief executive session at the end of our meeting?
Second.
Executive with the second.
And then ambulance, Tom?
Ambulance, yesterday I was called in to ask to attend a meeting and was told about a bill that we're going to receive that you guys need to, a bill that the board should be aware of. It was a Title 25 transport by air, so we're talking probably minimum of $50,000 to taxpayer. So we need to discuss that. And then that too. We have not received the bill yet, but we will.
Put yourself down on the discussion. Okay. For all in favor to approve the agenda as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion carried. Okay, next up is public comments.
Susan Bridge, I'm here to represent the Fair Board. Just wanted to give a quick update. To just let you know that we're really busy. We've got, our event center is booked. We have some space available, but we're, we are doing really good. We've got the grounds pretty much cleaned up. We, meaning Linda. I can't take credit for that, she's a powerhouse. She's getting a lot done and really proud to have her on board. And I just wanted to give you guys a heads up that we're clicking right along. We have a meeting on April 22nd, which is a special meeting. And we will be discussing the, we, we had to go back in. We have some more discussion about job description and the budget before we present our budget and ask for advertisement. So we will be having that meeting on April 22nd. And that's about it. Got any questions?
Any questions for Susan?
All right. Do I have to bring up the form I filled out? Okay, all right.
Question, Susan, how did, how did the rodeo go on Sunday?
Um, I talked a bit, like you said, it went really good. It was small, but the grounds are good, people are happy. We're looking at the crow's nest through the Friends and Fair on the inside arena. But now we're, and we've got the, we're working on the outdoor arena as we transition with seasonal work. So, so far, everything has been very positive.
Robert Young, yes.
Next up is.
Are we still in public comment?
Yes.
Danny Val. We were asked by some of the county entities to attend a meeting last week on dispatch. And I just want to make a comment on that meeting. We were told that the meeting was for everybody to put input into dispatch. And they did let people from the county and the city speak. But if you want input into what's going on, I would think you would ask the people before the meeting ended. Because that may have changed some minds at the meeting. They didn't. They held the meeting and for two hours, nothing got changed, in my books, as everything that you guys have been doing for the last eight months or whatever. And then after they made the decision, they said, well, what's the public thing? Well, that's kind of like the Forest Service saying, we're going to give you a comment period. And when you're in the comment period, they're already on to the next project. So to me, that was a misrepresentation. They did not want the public input, or you would get it at least the first part of the meeting. And my take of the meeting was, some people said it shouldn't be run as a business, some people said it's a service. Well, it is a service, and it's a county service. By statute, the county has to provide that. My feeling is, we've already got partway down the road. The county needs to set it up, get it running, and then bring the other entities in. My problem is, if we don't do this, everybody's wanting transparency. And the way we're doing this right now, I can't tell who's putting what in the sausage. I don't think you guys care. And they keep saying, well, it'll work out. My feeling is, we set up, I say we as the county, we set this up, we dispatch. If Newcastle wants more of a service from us than what we're giving to everybody in the county, then they should pay for that service. That's pre-enterprise, that's America. Same way with Upton. Also, the fire district. Fire district is not county no more. If you're going to make Upton pay for fire dispatch, which they will through the city, then the fire district should. I was on the fire board when they wanted to go to the district, and I bought it. Because I said, once, we've got the privileges, the full privileges of the county over us. Yes, we were only getting $60,000 a year. And the Fair Board was getting $80,000 a year, figure that out, a year of fire service for less than a week to fair. But I said, once we do this, we'll be stuck to our budget. We have a mill levy. We can now be sued to the fire district, and I'm in the fire district. But they want, I, I got off the board because I couldn't support it. So if we don't build a dam, how do we know where our money's going? Who's paying what? As a fire district, they should have a budget. And they said, well, Walt Soper was the county commissioner at the time. And they go, well, I'm sure if we run out of money, we can go to the county and they'll give us some. Should Walt have been county fire chief for years? Walt looked at it and go, we can't. You're a district now. You have a budget. Well, if we don't all pay and put it to a pay line, we don't know who's paying what. And that's not fair to the cities, it's not fair to the county, and it's definitely not fair to the taxpayers. That's all I say. Thank you.
In response to that, Danny? What's that? In response to that, I think Ryan will answer some of your questions here in dispatch, I believe. I think there are a lot of questions to be answered. Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Dan Dobbins, I just want to remind you all, you're not quite as close as you are in the county building, courthouse over there. So for us older ears, would you speak up? Make sure you speak up. These younger ears, I'm sure they don't have any problems with.
We do. Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Harry Gunn, we will move on to the resolution. Second Amendment Protection Act. Dan's, you're up.
You guys should all have a copy of that. We, we usually bring them in, but we changed our deal. We're going to give them to Becky, and that way you guys can get them ahead of the meeting. And you all get them at the same time, and you've got some time to discuss it. So what this is, we just basically added one paragraph to the Second Amendment of Weston County being a constitutional Second Amendment, sanctuary county. We thought we had it covered when we listed everything that shouldn't be used, paper, personnel, everything else. And still it happened. And we've been accused as a group of picking on Becky, and that's not true. When she did the deal with no guns at the election and stuff, we could have let that go, and she would have been in trouble. And we didn't want that. We, we're not here to pick on Becky. So, but she would have been planable under the SAPA law. So we just basically added the SAPA law to this statute. So it's perfectly clear to everybody and the county officials that you can't do what we just said. And here's the penalty if you do do it. And it's a state statute, and I think it will clarify the Second Amendment for everybody that's under it. And that's our, our only agenda, to make it simpler and keep people out of trouble.
Questions? So basically, the paragraph you had was the first paragraph on the resolution?
No, the last one.
The last one?
Next to the last.
Otherwise, it's basically exactly.
How long was next to last paragraph?
It's where it says the SAPA law.
Dan, to prepare this for you.
We did.
You guys spelled the United States twice, FYI.
I'll talk to the secretary.
My only concern, I think, with Dan, I have several concerns actually, but who's going to, who's going to force our county attorney to hold people to the fire, you know? And, and where, where does this end? Does it end in the courthouse? Does it, does it end with the judge that says, you're not allowed to bring guns into my courtroom? Is, is there anything preventing that judge from, from doing that?
That would have to be on a case-by-case basis. The, all the statute says is if you violate, that's a state statute. And if you violate that, you're subject to that fine. And because we're a Second Amendment, they are infringing on the Second Amendment of the sanctuary county.
So if I fund Brian Kolbar at Sheriff's Department, who's at fault? Me or Brian Kolbar for, am I at fault for funding him? If he says something to say, prevent somebody from packing a gun somewhere, or has brought Mr. Kolbar to fall then as the top law enforcement officer?
You'll have to ask Brian what his authority is. He's the highest in the land. All we're saying is that the statutes are clear. And that, that statute applies to Brian. And that's why the law enforcement in West, in Wyoming had so much input into the SAPA law. And Brian can jump in anytime he wants. We're just saying, it's a notice, is what it is. That the county should prosecute because we as a county have said we're a sanctuary county. Second Amendment is the law. And that's the highest law on the land on the Second Amendment.
To answer Commissioner Todd's question, on our courthouse, our own courthouse, it says on the outside of the door that the presiding judge has the final say on whether you can carry a firearm in his courtroom or not. It does say that on our courtroom. So I think, looking at the, the actual statute that was put in there, that there's no reason not to support it. I think this is more a support resolution than one that has any teeth. When I say no teeth, it's because it's already, if you look at the statute, it's already a law. So I have no problem supporting it.
And that holds true in Campbell County. You can go into Campbell County courthouse, and there's no, nothing about guns. There's no, what's the word on money?
Restriction.
Metal detectors. But at each judge's chamber, they have that same notice. But he has, he reserves the right. He doesn't say you can't carry it, you just have to have his permission before you can.
You know, the state law, there's, in the state law, it just says state law. It's the state. There's nothing in there about Weston County. You know, are we trying to supersede state law?
No. No, we just, all we did was wrote down the state law and attached it to our resolution. So it's clarified. So, so Brian comes in and they go, well, we didn't know that. Well, it's right there in the county deal. And it's, it's actually to protect you guys, so you know what's involved if you violate the Second Amendment resolution in Weston County.
So it isn't real clear to me. So if a judge orders no guns in the courthouse, it's?
That doesn't come on you at all.
But it doesn't come on the judge?
Well, that would be ever who wanted to push it. They could take him to court and see if he has that authority. I guarantee you, our county attorney's not going to prosecute it if the, if the judge says no.
So what teeth does this have?
I don't know. It's not, it's not.
It's strange. I'm all for the Second Amendment, I'm not arguing against it. I'm just trying to figure out what teeth this actually has.
Had that been attached when Becky filed the original resolution? She would have known that. She could have asked the county attorney. The county attorney could have said, well, that falls under this. It keeps everybody on board. It, it, it basically puts Brian and them on notice, any of the county officials, that if you violate the Second Amendment under the SAPA deal.
I'd like to hear Brian's thoughts on it.
Well, I haven't read their updated resolution, but I was a firm, firm supporter of the Second Amendment Protection Act in legislature. Couple years back, I was there, I spoke very highly of it. I think it's important that, it's, that statute's important. It protects us, where it really protects us is that federal government potential. And it gives, it gives us some authorities in that sense, as well as it just keeps everybody in check. As far as the resolution, a resolution's a resolution. It just says, yeah, we support that statute, or no, we don't. Resolutions typically seem to have no teeth, I'm not sure why that is. But it just makes a statement that the county supports that. I don't know how this is written, so I haven't had a chance to review it, but I will. But I, I'll tell you, I was a, I was 100% behind that Second Amendment Protection Act statute being put in place. It gives, it gives the state of Wyoming some authority too against, you know, under the 10th Amendment to, to deal with some of those federal overreach issues.
Thank you. Brian?
Yes, sir.
The second to the last of the paragraph of the sentence that you're referring to, it reads this way. Whereas violations of the SAPA Act of 2022 may be pursued by county attorneys and penalties for violation, including $2,000 fine and a year in jail. I was just wanting to ask our county attorney if he had any input on that for the addition, the resolution.
I just shared, and I'm all for that, the Second Amendment and everything too. And I just was a little fuzzy on whether the resolution was, I mean, Brian and I have a duty to, to enforce the state statutes, criminal state statutes. And obviously, we have that discretion to look at it and see what we have to do and do what's right. And I was just a little fuzzy on whether this would make it so the board thought that they could try to tell us what to pursue in law enforcement and prosecute. And I just was fuzzy on that. That's the only concern I had on this. So if it's not meant for that, then, then I don't see a problem with it. But if it, if it's unclear on that, then, you know, I don't want to, I don't think Brian would either be in a position where we're arguing with the board.
Yeah, we don't want to be, we don't want our hands tied if we're trying to prosecute a homicide or something. I mean, that's, that's, I think, is, that's what we're looking at, so.
Our intention, our intention of the deal was, it's just that the county supports the SAPA bill. That's, that's all you're doing, is endorsing the SAPA bill, as far as I can see. We have no authority over the county attorney, other than you guys can say, we'd like you to check in on this because they violated the SAPA law.
Does this have any authority over school districts in their home room?
It just says, it's not, I mean, the resolution says you support it, you support that act and what it provides, so.
So when a school posts, I don't want any guns in the school, in our school district, and I'm loud, I mean, I'm not real comfortable with anybody and everybody packing a gun or my children are in school. So I don't know that that's, I mean, there's bad actors out there, I guess, but. Is there any way we could table this and get like a, I would like a Attorney General's opinion on some of that kind of stuff?
Are you sure to send it down?
I mean, I'm a supporter of Second Amendment, everything, all we're through. My concern is, we may be trying to enact something or make a law that's more defined than what state says it is. That's my concern either case, where we're actually saying Weston County, where we're maybe trying to supersede state law.
Dan?
The way I look at it, it just tells you, you have to prosecute, or prosecute. It doesn't say what pervaded and what state statute, whatever. That's my take on it.
I guess, I feel like you're reading maybe a little bit too much into it. To me, it just says, therefore be it resolved that the Weston County Commissioners are in full support of use of Second Amendment Protection Act and associated penalties, et cetera. I think it just is, we're, we're just supporting it. We're, we're not the law.
Right.
He's the law, and you're a lawyer. We can't, we can't supersede legalities either. I think it's just showing our support, correct?
It's correct.
Absolutely.
John?
I think there's laws every day that are, could be enforced and aren't enforced. I think that's up to the sheriff, I think that's up to the county attorney. Example, speeding ticket. You pull over a speeding ticket, you're not necessarily going to get a speeding ticket. You may get a speeding ticket, and it's the right to give you a speeding ticket, but it's not always enforced as a speeding ticket. It's, I'm going to give you a warning or whatever. And like I said, I don't, I don't think this is anything more than support. We did the Second Amendment support for the Second Amendment Sanctuary in our county, even though the state of Wyoming was already a Second Amendment Sanctuary. So just another layer of support for that bill. That's, that's my.
You know, I'll just, I'll just throw this out there. You can debate the wording of that all you want. I mean, the SAPA bill in Missouri, which was probably the lead to all SAPA bill in the country, it's going through significant amount of court debate and issue. They find part of it unconstitutional, those kind of things. So I mean, you can word it that how you want, that doesn't free it up from those debates. And that's where judicial system actually, actually works fairly well. Like I said, I'll go back to this, the state statute, the SAPA state statute, I backed that 100%. I think it, I think it gives us some, well, where I see it really benefits it, it gives us some pull against overreach from the federal government. And it, there's some, there's some language in there that allow the Attorney General to take action when those things happen. I think that's the most important thing. I think you'll find throughout the state of Wyoming, there's always going to be a bad actor here and there. But we treat that, most all of, but I think we treat all of our constitutional rights with some respect and due diligence to, to, to work through whatever that is. I know speaking of law enforcement, sometimes you make a, have to make, you know, a split-second decision. You just have to be, the key to that is, is if that decision is, is off, we need to fix it. So I, I, I don't, I don't see any issue with the resolution.
Also, also, I'm a school board's guy. I don't want my school to lose.
I remember the Second Amendment first come out, we were not the first county to do it. There were several counties that had it. And we supported it, of course, so we took that, looked at it, and then we added the paragraph that, to clarify it. That was known that Brian did not use any of his personnel, paper, and nothing. And Brian pointed this, and we didn't, we didn't talk to Brian before we did that. He said, man, that clarified a lot. Because now he can say, according to county resolution, you can't do this. Well, a case came up, so we thought, you know what? We ought to add to that to clarify even more. This is why you can't do it, because of the SAPA law. A lot of what happened, not everything will fall under that. But some stuff will fall under that SAPA law. We're just trying to clarify it, make it easier for our county attorney and for our county sheriff, and for the people. Because most places, they go, ignorance of the laws, no excuse. And we don't want that. We're trying to keep things smooth and level, and, and that's transparency. We keep hearing constituents and transparency. That's all we're trying to do, is make this more transparent, that common person. Because the common person does not study and pay attention to a lot of this stuff. And so the better is laid out, the smoother things run. Okay, that was our only intention.
I've got a, kind of a question here. It's, the first paragraph says that no Weston County money, resource, or personnel can be used to contrarian to the Second Amendment as a right of citizens' keep and barrel arms guaranteed. Tom goes, okay, if the school says actually no firemen in there, according to this, Brian, we can't send Brian in there to have him removed?
Well, that, that's a case you'd have to take on a case-by-case basis. There, there's also laws that says the opposite. So which state statute was superseded? What that's, why that was written is because, like Brian said, the overreach. What they do is the federal government come there. And let's. And let's do it a different way. Suppose we all voted that we wanted gun-free zones done away with, because that's where the crazies go to shoot. I mean, you put a hung tide out there and tell the guy, go hunting, he's going to shoot the one tide, and he's going to go through the rest looking for them. But if we did that, then the deal would come in here, and Brian would have no recourse. They'd come to the sheriff, and they must, anybody from out of state has to come to the sheriff and check it. Well, they say, we're going to do this, all we need is your deputies to show us where. We don't want that. And Brian would have to argue, and I'll tell you, Bill Ware got letters from the FBI because he would not take threat money. They go, well, you gotta take it, it's free money. And Bill Ware goes, no, it ain't free. Look down here in all the strains and attached to it. Yeah.
Could I add to the, to help maybe answer Ed's question? So the school district decides and has decided that those are gun-free zones. Ultimately, I have respect for that decision. I see both sides of that debate. If that becomes something where it's said that that's a violation of the Second Amendment, I don't know if it is, but if it's said that it is, this still applies. See, if it's an if, it's a violation of the Second Amendment. I don't believe it is to limit the carry of firearms in a school, because, I mean, it can open up a whole nother can of worms unless, let that school district make that decision. It is a district. The same way with the judge's courtroom. There are times when he doesn't even want us in there with firearms, and we can understand that. I mean, those go, there are reasons at times, and so when he does that, I don't think it's a violation of the Second Amendment. It's specific to what's going on in that courtroom, and he's got the jurisdiction in that courtroom, and I may not always agree, I will respect that decision unless I see something that is just blatant. And when, you know, I don't think that changes that first paragraph.
It's more common, just, it's an irony, I don't think we should have guns in schools either, or should be, but the irony to that is, is we always call a no-gun zone, and then the irony, when someone shows up with a gun, we call people with other guns. So there's an irony to that.
Can we all agree that made of law was not very clear, and like, I say call for the vote, I'm going to vote no, just for that fact, I don't like, and I'm voting on something that is strangely unclear.
If you call, all those who favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those who say nay?
Nay.
This fact, I don't, the wording made it clear, but I'm firmly with the Second Amendment. Okay, well, we vote in pass. Kind of talked about the resolution. Thank you. Sorry. Thank you, guys. Next is our Good Rock. Good Rock Shield Plan Station.
Okay. All tough, all tough.
So, they still have not offered a thousand dollar.
So we can see, I need you guys to provide if you want to save. Fifty-five hundred, twenty-five hundred dollars, none of the options. And then we worked out two different options. The twenty-eight, where the green is eight, seven, eighty-five thousand is a better option for the county. It doesn't have employee paid in proportion because our insurance did walk in, it's not fifteen percent, because it's wood between the employee and county. And this is the one where it costs a little less because it's split. It's kind of a new issue. The one where it's nine hundred and one thousand is where we kept it between last year. So you guys can see, I know it's a lot of this.
The nine hundred and one county picked up all the reviews?
No, that's where we kept it, my financials. The nine hundred and eighty-five, we split the difference between employee and employer.
Correct.
Better say, of the interest, yes.
So, but the ad is, the green employees.
Picking up.
Picking up.
Their portion of the pay.
Yeah. Are you getting the feel for what the employees feel about this hour, because there wasn't that change where they have this and.
They haven't been presented with this yet, but most of them will stay on twenty-five percent, just because we cheaper, cheaper plan for them. With them taking our thousand dollar away, thousand dollar deductible away, if we were to do the thousand dollar deductible, last year, they would charge us, each person that was on it, they would have a percentage. So when we looked out last year, they only offered a thousand dollars.
Do we have to make this today?
Yes.
More discussion?
Well, you know, there's a difference, but it's not, it's not drastic difference for the county. I'm thinking, in my opinion, is we should stay with the lower, or the higher price for us and lower for the employees, just because everything else is going up so much for everybody, and things are getting tight, and we want to keep our employees, and we want them to know that we appreciate them, and it's almost like a pay decrease if we do that. I know it seems like a small amount, maybe, but the way things are going, it's not a small amount. Might be a trip to the grocery store, or to the gas station, and that's a big deal. So in my opinion, we should go for the ones across the county a little bit more.
Yes, bro. If we, if the county of Georgia is good with the, the one plan is some way it's a, right, fourteen hundred dollar a month increase to the county overall. Fourteen hundred a month? Yeah. Overall, the county each month.
I should. I make a motion that we go with plan that ends up in nine hundred and one thousand and adopt that for this year.
I'll second. We have a motion, Paul, and that's it, to move forward with the Good Rock Shield Plan across county, nine hundred and one thousand, and thirty-seven dollars for the upcoming fiscal year. Is there any other discussion? Hearing that, all those favorite, please say aye.
Aye.
All those who say nay, motion carried. Next up is the Updun Chamber of Commerce.
Chairman, Commissioners, well, first off, I just wanted to thank you guys for being here today. You know, there's a lot of us that wear multiple hats, so it's almost impossible for any of us to go anywhere. So I do appreciate you guys being here today. So I just wanted to give you guys an update of kind of what's gone on. Could you state your name? Oh, yes, I'm Kate Millen. I'm the Updun Chamber of Commerce President. But I just wanted to give you guys an update of about what's been going on the past couple months and things that we have in store for this last quarter of the fiscal year. So back in January, we held our officer electing for the two thousand twenty-three year. I was elected the Chamber of Commerce President, Clark Overly was elected the vice president, Kelly Malar was elected secretary, Watson Taft the treasurer, and then we have our three-year, two-year, and one-year board members, Tony Gibson, Walt Freeman, and Katie Easton, respectively, and then Buffy Howick will be serving as the past president. So the big event we had in March was our festival tables. We held it on March eighteenth. We had over a hundred and forty people there. Joe's Food Center catered the events with high school students serving. So open pass, well, when we started the festival table, it was meant to raise funds for the park in collaboration with the town and the Updun Economic Board, and it's kind of flourished into raising funds for nonprofits. So in January, we decided when the conversation began to happen with the West Ham Museum District and the Updun History and Heritage, with moving the Red Island Museum out to Old Town, we figured that it'd be a great opportunity for Updun, or at least the Chamber of Commerce to show their support for the two, just because we have a, there's an industry, or a tourism industry that Updun currently is getting right now. So we went ahead with the Updun History and Heritage, raising the funds for their organization to give money towards Old Town for them to use, whatever they wanted to with that. So, and they had also provided us a list of what they're planning on doing to improve Old Town too. So, so from the table reservations, the silent auction items, I've donated five businesses, and voting for the best decorated table, we actually raised four thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars for Old Town for this year. So this is the biggest year that we've had for the fundraiser, so that was really huge to have those numbers. And it really, with a hundred and forty people being there, it showed, from my personal opinion, that Updun as a whole is in full support of this. You know, there's, we just missed this opportunity for so long, and both entities could use the hell of one another too. So that was big. We, at the event, we also presented three new community awards, and these awards were based off of the Think Up and First two-point-oh campaign that we, the Chamber of Commerce, started last year. So the first award was to, was the Greater Updun Area Business Achievement Award, and that was to recognize a professional or business owner, and that's involved in the Greater Updun, Updun Area to make an impact in what they're doing. And that award was presented to, let me see, to the former owner of Unkers, Judge Jude Products, Pat Pendleton. And then we had two community service awards, specifically the Think Up and First Award and the Updun Award, awarded to business and individual that is obtaining and adhering to the qualities that make Updun the best on earth, which we determined were the education system, the quality of life that we have here, and the things that we have. So those winners were Joe's Food Center for Business, and then, just not hearing right now, but Police Chief Susan Bridge was also awarded a visual award. So, but, I mean, all of this stuff is great, but I think the biggest thing that Updun realized, and got the most awareness out of, was when different organizations gave organizational updates. We have Mayor Trandle give a town of Updun update, Superintendent Overly give the West Ham School District number seven update, Sam Pattonstall gave the Updun History and Heritage update, John Marshall gave the Development Board update, myself gave the Chamber of Commerce update. But the biggest thing that, you know, there was a common theme within all of those, and it was, you know, Updun isn't a huge, it has a huge opportunity right now, just because everything going on from the rare elements demonstration plan to the housing market prices that we're in, all the prices, but the theme that came out of that is, you know, we're all doing something, we have to do something, like we don't have to wait for anything anymore. It was referenced multiple times, you know, it used to be a chicken or the egg scenario, it's not anymore, you know, the things that have been presented to us, now we just have to do it. And the biggest thing with that, what all the organizations realized, is it's not necessarily just transparency, like it's, that word seems to get thrown a lot around anymore, and most of the time, it's not transparency, it's collaboration, it's actually working together rather than just telling each other what we're doing, you know? If you want anything to get done, especially not that we want anything to get done, we have to directly work together to make those things happen. So that was really cool to see, you know, kind of put us in a direction of, if we want to develop and grow our community, these are the things that we have to do, it starts with us. So that was festival tables. A couple administrative things, right now, we have, as of March thirty-first, we have thirty-one business members and one individual member. We will be awarding two Books for Rains scholarships this year, an amount of a thousand dollars each to one graduating senior and one college student right now to look towards books for college that will be awarded, well, that will be selected at the beginning of May. So, and then a couple of events that we just started planning right now, we'll be hosting our annual community yard sale, June ninth through the eleventh. One thing that we are planning on doing this year to bring more to the community is we started talking about putting on a community cleanup, you know? It was actually brought into the last town council meeting here last Tuesday, the chicken organs, talking about putting in urban chicken organs, and one of the citizens that brought that up was, or brought up being against it, was, you know, how can we do something else or enact something else that's going to require people to take care of things and clean things that we can't even take care of as citizens, take care of our own town and our own property? So we're going to try to put this together and work with different entities in Updun to put together a community cleanup as well as a community yard sale, just to get people active. And one of the thoughts that behind the community yard sale was to put together contact lists of people that are businesses and whatnot that can take, you know, whether it's wood, garbage, sheet metal, whatever it is that can take, if someone has, you know, like a bunch of old cars that they want to get rid of, but they just haven't had the time to set that together, providing those contacts for people, for businesses, or people that can take away that stuff for them. So we'll be planning that work in a little bit more this month and next month, so then we can hopefully have a big event with that, make that exciting as well. But we're also open to ideas too, if you guys have anything, know any ideas or anything that we could do to make it big, we're always open to those as well. And then the big thing is, we started planning for fund base. One of the topics that's kind of been happening the past couple of years, you know, it's the chicken organs, talking about putting in urban chicken organs. And one of the citizens that brought that up was, or brought up being against it was, you know, how can we do something else or enact something else that's going to require people to take care of things and clean things that we can't even take care of as citizens, taking care of our own town and our own problems? So we're going to try to put this together and work with different entities in Updene to put together a community cleanup as well as a community yard sale, just to get people active. And one of the thoughts that behind the community yard sale was to put together a contact list of people that are businesses and whatnot that can take, you know, whether it's wood, garbage, sheet metal, whatever it is that can take. If someone has, you know, like a bunch of old cars that they want to get rid of, but they just haven't had the time to set that together, providing those contacts for people, for businesses or people that can take away that stuff for them. So we'll be planning that work in a little bit more this month and next month, so then we can hopefully have a big event with that, make that exciting as well. But we're also open to ideas too, if you guys have anything, know any ideas or anything that we could do to make it big, we're always open to those as well. And then the big thing is we started planning for fundays. One of the topics that's kind of been happening the past couple of years, you know, it's, it seems like there's a couple of people that are doing everything for the event, so it's been hard to really put together, like to create an event that people remember, people will talk about. So we've started up the fundays planning now, so we can actually get ideas of what we want to do to make it a big event this year. So the main thing that we're, we have decided, we decided in our last chamber meeting is we'll be having a Friday night concert. We're still determining the location at the moment, but more likely we'll be having a Friday night concert up at the Bamshell at Allen City Park. That's the last, the first time that anyone's used it, so, for those things. So we're excited to be able to do that. Then as well, finding an organization to run, an organization in Updene to run a 5K as well to raise funds for their organization too. So just trying to get more things going on on Friday again, because it seems like for the past, I'd say five to 10 years, it's been primarily a Saturday event. So Friday for big, big thing, having a concert and a 5K. And then on Sunday, we'll be moving, working with the wealth association to move the Joe Hayes Memorial Golf Tournament to just a Sunday event and making it, upscaling it from how it's been in the past to really get people out of Old Town, or control town, get people out to the secret parts of it. So we're excited for that as well. And then one last thing before I go, I'm sure you guys are aware, as many Chamber of Commissions are across the state and the nation, chambers are kind of, are losing their numbers and losing their voice, and ultimately losing their purpose. So we've made it a priority and are going to make it a priority this year that we've redefined what our chamber is, what we want to do. You know, for years it was helping people with businesses, bringing business resources. And we've gotten to a point where those things, like businesses already have so much access to that as it is. So we have to redefine what we do and redefine how we can be of benefit to businesses and communities as well. So we've been working on compiling new chamber benefits, just trying to figure out what we can do to make an impact and really make chamber memberships valuable to everyone as well. So we're really excited to put that together, to hopefully increase our numbers as well. So, you know, we've been, we've always had a strong chamber through hard times, through good times, you know? We've, we've been there and we've done what needs to be done. So we're dedicated to continuing that. And I really think, you know, with the board we have, but just organizations in Updene, we're starting to see a pattern of bringing everyone up together. And I'm just, I'm really excited just from this alone to see what we're able to do this year. So do you guys have any questions really? It's been a second since you guys have heard an update on Updene Chambers. So you guys, any questions you guys have?
Have any questions?
I appreciate the comment, Kate. In collaboration along with transparency, I agree totally with that. Whether the dates of the fundays this year.
So it is the third weekend in July, so it'll be July 14th through the 16th.
What's your question?
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the Commission of Scholarships.
Speaking of transparency, this has been something I've always done in silence for many years. I'm wearing a lawsuit, but we're doing things silently, so how are we going to handle it?
We're in a lawsuit because we did our scholarships in silence?
No, we're in a lawsuit for having a quote-unquote "secret ballot." Are we going to do this in secret like we've always done? Or are we going to discuss this in an open session in front of everybody? And, because there's kids involved here. And is Mr. Tor Spite in attendance by chance? About mistakes? Mr. Coburn? Any other children that put in for this, that are decent for this?
Yeah, I have some.
Is there any kids in here that are out here?
I thought he was coming to you.
Okay.
Have we had any complaints that maybe we can address in the way we've been handling? Or have we not had complaints and it's gone smoothly, I guess?
I would guess my initial thought, my first strike on that is is we can probably make an issue about everything on transparency, but I think the two topics are completely different. That's just my opinion. I don't have a problem with addressing complaints where they come up and trying to make the process better, but what's your suggestion?
I think we do it in an open session. We're sending comments on, on people. And this big transparency process, I would like, if you're not doing it in an open, you know, it is going to become an issue someday. The work being sued over is, wasn't an issue apparently in the back. So it was argued that it's been done multiple times in the past. So I think we have a discussion in an open session over who receives this dollar.
I have no problem with doing anything new and trying something new. I will graciously disagree that the two are very different subjects.
I mean, we can do this.
I, I, well, I, I guess my concern is, it doesn't matter if we're doing it in silence or we're saying a vow, I don't, I don't see a reason to do it that way. Because if we have, if we have a copy of what we did, if anyone ever has a question and you write or knock that down, but I have a problem with, if you've ever gone through this process with your children, this is a hard process. There's a lot to this. They write these letters. I, how can I sit here today and, and half out and it's just, I need to look at these. I need to read them. I want to see what they have to say. I want to look at their grades.
I think, I think there's probably a balance point when it comes down to this. The balance point that I'm thinking of is, is as far as, is saying done in secret, I don't like that terminology. I think that a person, as a board, we can still vote in accordance to the way that we always have. And the results of in which we voted have those we public. If anyone requests, hey, who voted for who, I would like to know that, that be available to anyone concerned. I don't think that that would be an issue.
Then I, sorry, then I, I want our names attached to each list. And that's where it will be.
I don't see why.
Transparency is respectful to the kids that are lying.
But I don't think it's respectful for us to do something right now. I, I think all of this, I think we should have ample time to read all of it. I mean, they write these, they put a lot of themselves into this, all these letters and everything. This, this is all that'll work for these kids. And it's not respectful for us just to sit here and do stuff right now.
When do we have to decide that?
Uh, we have time, but, I mean, normally you guys all have one, one. And I mean, often some people, I can't send her my email, so that's why you can't come in. They have the question pretty much.
Yeah, the way this was before is that made one package, we just, we pass each application down. I would be very cautious, there is, might be certain information that is private in these. We want to be very careful.
That's why they're locked.
There is some informations.
I think discussing some of that in, in open might be a little disrespectful.
Yeah, and yeah, they're very, we have to be very cautious.
So what process do we want to take?
Well, we may have, like, the time and hours.
Do we have a date for these need to be invited?
Um, I guess you guys need to decide on a decision.
Is there any reason we can't take it home and turn in this, this one, see, we'll give you a packet back, put our name on it, and turn it in to the next?
Just, I feel more than a school of that, because I really want to give each, each person my time and effort. This is, this is very important, like, I just thought we just might.
Sure, you did the top that you thought. Why don't you jump ahead on the agenda? We're going to review the dates first for a while. Let's board this right. Okay, we will just jump ahead then.
It's you.
You, Mr. Coburn, you're up there for dispatch update.
So the deputies started inside the G M work yard, proposed to get a mock arm. And it looks, I mean, when we were putting toward, we were like, oh, we're like, um, we still kind of felt that, I still believe this, that, you know, that equipment needs to stay in the building if it's going to be, you know, at the construction. I understand, and I, and I haven't watched the video, that the city council met last night all that, discussed, made a proposal that looked like, pretty much what they wanted to do all along, is take the equipment, put it in their building, they rent, manage the people, they run it. But, and I don't, and I didn't see it, I was there, I didn't know if they were going to run the state. I was there for youth services, they affected the youth there. And so I don't know this, I didn't watch it. But my understanding was is they would be willing to take half or something of the equipment. Did you?
I watched it.
Did you watch it? Okay, so is that pretty close with what you thought?
They want your equipment in their building, and then they only pay us to do the county.
And I would have no idea, did they talk about, I heard someone say.
About bringing their new foundation.
Right, did they talk about how they were going to run that with a right?
An advisory board with, I believe they sent two city council members, two county members, and two members.
So I, I haven't had enough time to reach you all, and I will sit there, so I'll look it up tomorrow. I, my understanding was they're bringing here today.
Um, I thought Pam said she was going to call Dawn and tell him what the proposal was, if she wants to.
She called me. Pam called this morning, and my, my personal opinion was the same as it was. We're in a tough spot between missing two commissioners at the last meeting, which that's what their views are, or their views. But my view is, is that compromise is something when both sides give something. I did not hear very much compromise, which I made very clear in that meeting. You know, they want it in their building. There were some issues brought up that were never brought up in any meetings before, which I made that clear too. Those things have to be considered, but I'm still at a point where, I'm not exactly sure from what you just said, I did not go to that meeting last night, so I did not hear what was said. But I'm still at a point where if they wanted it before, they wanted that. They didn't want to join powers before, they don't want it now. They want to run it, they ran it before. So I'm not exactly sure where the compromise is. On the other hand, we heard from the constituents at that meeting, and as I've already discussed with you, every single one of them said, we don't need two dispatches, which is the obvious statement to make, and that we would be affected at election time. I don't make decisions based on elections, but I do make decisions, some I hope. And I think most people on the board here do, based on what our constituents want and what's for the best interest of the county. And until some compromise and what their compromise of are becomes clear, I'm not, I'm not ready to give them the key to the city and say, well, things changed and let's keep going the same way we've always been.
Two, two thousand and four-ish, the county turnover funds from, I mean, Minnesota, Holy Street Fund, something like that, the city, the government, $315,000 to the city to purchase the equipment that they currently have. So this sounds almost exactly just like that all over again, with the exception of. Here lies the problem, is it's 2023, and we've been dealing with a lot of issues since then, multiple chiefs, multiple sheriffs. I have said from day one, at the very, very moment, and I, and I 100% agree, there's got to be some compromising. It feels like it's going to be, it feels like there's going to be compromises, it's only on ourselves. But I've said from the beginning, that at the very least, if we go anything that looks like what they're potentially proposing, that we have to have a contract, we have to have something to keep, and I don't know if that's possible. I mean, when you really look at contracts and stuff, how do you hold them? How do you hold them accountable? What, what hurts when they do wrong? Or we believe they do wrong, so, that's not, that's for somebody in a lot different field than me. But I think, I think, and I'm just spitballing here, what I'm saying here is not exactly what I decided, but one of the thoughts I did have, if we were to go down, we put in, you know, we, we, when I say we, the county, not just the sheriff's office, we look at what we would want in that contract. And I would need a ton of help on this, you know, I mean, think of, you know, they don't have, I would be just wanting to, they don't, they don't have that, they do have that batteries the last time. Well, most, those batteries are designed to carry the equipment until the generator fires up. Because there is a period of time when the power kicks off to fire the generator up, the generator up to the proper RPM, foot transfer switch, those kinds of things. And those, I mean, we need to know what all of those are. I thought about it almost all night last night, I could see the staff's face, I don't know if that's it. So I'm, I'm in a, I think this is frustration with people, so like you said, this is not what I decided, but I was going to point it out, I'm just beat to death, feeling like I've kicked a chin for 10 years. We've been beaten, I mean, I think this is a dead horse that's been being beaten for 20 plus years. And roughly a year ago, we made a decision to allow you to move forward, proceed forward with the joint powers, or do you feel we deviated from that somehow still? Are we still on that trajectory?
I'm still working that line right now. I mean, as we speak, there's people in that building doing stuff, getting ready.
And with that said, that still gives everybody in the county, say the matter, what happens in dispatch must account. I am still completely against, and I've argued from day one on this whole deal, as long as it's within the county jurisdiction, everybody in the county has to say.
I can't just, that looks hard. I just, you know, like I said, right now, I think it's tiredness, emotion, some of those things, but.
Yeah, super.
Cheaters, yeah, I had my ask here.
I feel like we're just going over it again and over it.
And, and so the board is aware, part of the update was that if we, hey, we beat up that in our servant room, all the finished, I mean, the, the physical structure there, there's. And like you said, there's got probably an issue.
Um, I, I want you to know after the last meeting, it's, you, you've been put in a very difficult place, and we've all been put in a very difficult place, we all want more dispatch. I, I support you going forward as the.
I, I support you going forward as the county. Um, I, I still am not a hundred percent sure that the issue that came up in the last meeting regarding personnel issues, workplace environment, since that was the first time we heard it, I, I'm sorry about that. It seems like a personnel issue that could have been taken care of a long time ago. That's no reason to, to spend money and take this chance of moving our dispatch. It doesn't make sense to me. I still feel like that's not the answer we're looking for as to their, why, the reasoning behind what they're doing.
To clear something up there, when you talk about these, the majority of those issues were, um, related to the fact that it would not allow police department staff to have free access to the superior area of the jail, so they can smoke and do those kinds of things. This is, we've talked about that a hundred times, talked about, I'm talking about the elevator, who's this girl, they'll know, it's a jail, but we never have been to jails.
And quite frankly, if it was a personnel issue and they were running the dispatch at the time, they should have taken care of it. So I, I'm a little confused by that and I feel like the last couple of meetings we've had, um, we've gone, waiting and hoping that we can come to a compromise. Like Dawn said, we haven't seen compromise. The seat feels a little bit like a shopping.
Well, it feels like you need a compromise.
Um, in, in, I don't know the word, the right word I'm looking for here, but in the conversation I had with the mayor this morning, there isn't an expressed interest to compromise, but it, it needs to be, um, and I explained this to her yesterday in fact. There needs to be, uh, more than just words in, in compromise. Um, I am frustrated as Commissioner Todd is. The one thing that I do want to say about this is that if it gives, uh, appearance is everything. I mean, a perception is real if someone believes it's real. And if you, you can be as frustrated as you want to be, but we're talking about, in fact, millions of dollars. I brought up the question in that meeting. I think we're off on those numbers a little bit, but you told me there was some figures that were not in those calculations. If we look at their budget and theirs, you're saying three seventy, theirs was like five seventy-one. This is going to be an expensive venture no matter how.
That's one of the things that they figured in there that I obviously did not was, was that.
Right.
You know, and because in my budget, I would see that, right, I see this, and that's what I faced.
As soon as we say. And I'm not criticizing it, I just, I wanted to know the difference between the two, um, and where the gap was. Because it's a significant gap if you look at the two numbers, and I'm fighting with that too, but.
The other gap there is the inefficiency we've been dealing with.
When we get to the point where we can't discuss it, then we are truly at a point of no compromise. Um, and I'm open to hearing any suggestion, and I, I felt like the board was open to any suggestion in order to get to a joint powers board. One dispatch, which under a population of six thousand, two dispatches is an absolutely absurd thing to even discuss or look at. Um, am I saying that, um, it's got to be all our way? I'm personally not saying that, and saying anything else would be saying, I'm not willing to compromise on anything, which then goes back to what they're doing, of saying they're not going to compromise on who runs it, where the location is, and who's in charge of it. So there's where my hangup is. We can all, I think we're all tired of talking about dispatch and dealing with it. Unfortunately, the problem's still here and the problem's unaddressed and unwilling to talk about is a problem that is why it's gone unsolved for how many years? Because we've allowed things to happen, the, the county as well, that should not have happened in order to put us in the position where we are now. The only people that lose are the constituents. And if we can't even sit down and have a conversation about it, then we're unwilling to compromise. So we're no better than, than they are.
Just a point of clarification about, uh, what was proposed last night at the city council meeting. The two people, uh, that Becky had mentioned from Upton, uh, Newcastle and Weston County, those would be interviewing two other individuals or whoever to select two individuals from the community, and they would be with the sheriff and then the two police chiefs. So you would have five members on the joint powers board.
So they did mention.
No.
Not, not by name.
An advisory board.
Advisory board.
Yeah, so we're meeting tomorrow ten with Sheriff Chief, I believe Chief Bridge is going to be there too, right?
He's there too.
Yeah. Brian's office and Jim, you have been working on the proposed agreement in the downed cliff. So I promise, you know, meeting next week, like we said last Wednesday's, come to permission. Uh, we did talk about maybe potentially trying to get a mediator, a third party mediator, maybe, try to help resolve some of these issues and just tell, you know, it would be a third party that doesn't have a stake in the game. Just tell, tell each side, hey, you're wrong on this or you're right on this to each side. I didn't reach out to, uh, an attorney. I have had a lot of experience with the casper. Fortunately, his quote was a bit high. Come on, man. His was, uh, it was, it, it, his name is Craig Sombard, he's a pastor, he's in charge of two thousand for each slide that we did today. So, um, you guys need to, I think it'd be probably a good idea to get a mediator for a third party perspective. Think that would be helpful. I don't know what you guys think about that, but I can keep digging into that issue, maybe price it more.
At the meeting, we talked about this mediator. I don't know that it's necessarily a bad idea. My concern is, is are we going to have to bring a mediator? And every time we have the board members from this advisory council, which I'm still hung up on the, correct me if I'm wrong, but, uh, an advisory board is not statutorily required to do anything. Where as a joint powers board, it has to be approved by the attorney general. Its statutorily requirements are, are laid out and has to be approved. And ultimately, the sheriff, who is the highest law in the land, would have say over that. So I think that we've had plenty of mediation meetings. Uh, I have a whole book that's too much to stick on, and mediator helps for a one-time deal. But the meeting I was at, I told Brian this, they were attacking each other, the board members, that they were suggesting we're attacking there. And honestly, this is the first time I've heard, um, Pam's never mentioned to me that she wanted the city council or commissioners on this board. This is the first time I've heard it again today. So if that's was on the table, that's the first I've.
No, that's not what she was proposing last night, is that you'd have two city councils, two Upton council, uh, town council, and two commissioners interview people who would apply. And then from that group, you select two of those that would serve with the sheriff and the two police.
We've already spent a great deal of money on this, both sides have. So every time we have a disagreement, are we going to need a mediator to get the problem solved? It just seems like a bad.
The purpose of the mediator would be to hopefully get us to a spot where we have some sort of agreement that is acceptable to all sides. Uh, if we can get that far, then you have your agreement, whatever structure you have, you operate and left. But the purpose of the mediator would be to actually get us to that point.
Now, on the building, I have an issue with whether we can dispatch. A rock and molotov cocktail can take the center down for a few bucks.
Well, no, I don't know how many of you are willing to dispatch center, but there's a window there that, uh, people couldn't, uh, dispatch. It's about that big, a hard top through, hard to see through and all of that. There's a reason, we had an individual with a piece of our, and it was filled with settlements, through the piece of that ramp, it's all apart. Kind of, they're, they're slammed on the, what they call the shadow, it was blasted, it was blasted and fired. Uh, detention officer responded and one of my deputies responded and took the guy out. So the police department purchased that piece of casper, not, not reason. The other potential issue over there is, is when you talk about that type of security, maybe there would not be twenty-four hour armed security in that building unless they post a, an officer. And in our building, we have the detention officers, they're twenty percent, they probably. I mean, they leave the building, but someone is always.
I'd like to just reiterate what, um, Sheriff Cobart said. I've been in law enforcement since nineteen eighty-five. I have not been in a dispatch center that provided that type of lack of security with windows at that level or that reachable.
Yeah, you don't need to have that.
No, I, I took those down.
And before I forget, when I, when you guys take to the, at a forty-five point, have this happen, so I would like to pass.
Uh, being that we've listened to Nate, I understand that this has been going on for a long time, frustrating. People have wanted to deal with it, you know, but to structure compromise, I understand we're talking about mediation and trying to get this thing kicked to the point where decisions can be made that are proper for the union service provided. Um, I was thinking about this, I was like, head spinning in a bunch of different directions. You got, you got information coming from this angle, information, a bunch of different angles. How to structure compromise? The compromise that we need resides in the issues that each entity are not compromising in. When we say this, this, and this, regardless of what entity that comes from, we are not going to budge. Those are probably the areas that need to be considered in the compromise. Because if you've got all of these used cars over here that don't mean nothing to you, you can have any one of these and it doesn't bother, it doesn't hurt your feelings more than. But when we're talking about what is important to those entities, I think a list, when three get together, the, the two dispatches and the sheriff's department, make a short list of what you need in stone and compare those to the other lists. Because that's where the problem is going to reside. It has for twenty-some years, right? It's not the things that we're, that we're easily, we're going to easily compromise with, because that's not really compromise. If you give up something, it doesn't really mean a whole lot to you. So I would say that that's probably structuring that meeting and understanding that going into it, um, that's where the heart of the, the issue is going to reside. I'll continue forward, Brian. Thank you. Thanks for your class, Nick.
I appreciate it.
Bye.
Okay, maintenance discussion is next.
Okay, um, I visited with Steve and he wanted me to, um, discuss with, this would be nice if you could make it today. He would like to propose to the board, um, him come in during the week on his own hours, since he's about his final meeting. Um, contract out the loaning to, um, Casey. He's actually learning to help see. And then in the winter times, we still have someone come in, just contact out the story, we call to Sean. But Steve will still come in during the week, check the elevator, um, check the things that he already knows that need to be checked. The, um, boiler, the air conditioner, the HVAC, check to see what's, what's up. He does not want set hours, so like he doesn't want to, um, have thirty hours and then be done. He'll come in, check what needs to be done. He'll have the work phone still with him if there's an emergency, if he's not able to come in, he'll come in. If not, he'll contact the people that needs to be called. He'll give us a, um, if this leaky or if this alarm's worn off, this is a new call. Just wants to make sure you guys continue doing that. And so we can come up with someone that way. He doesn't need to carry a driver, he's still doing stuff, just not on set hours. Just wanted to try to figure this out.
You're not in here to meet anybody.
He said he would contact you by someone, then just. So, but he, he wanted to continue for, just not at, you have to come in this many hours. You have to be here eight o'clock in the morning, seven, seven, right? He would just happily review it, because he doesn't have that other question.
Can you make a motion to refer that or what?
He's the one I need to talk to, I just think that would be.
Okay, bye, Nick. Only I would like, maybe you can prepare a checklist, what he does, so when you do give replacements, they'll have an idea of what to go out and check.
Well, and he said he would still come in if he remembered.
All right, that's good. Anything else under rule business? I'm looking forward to the new business.
Okay, so the public health affairs contract meeting, when they did their audit proposal, they forgot to add in the raise. So they are short five thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars in, in, so we need to have that in emergency. Five thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars and forty cents and one hundred, like zeros and zeros, one eight, and zero, one, three, zeros and zeros.
So this will just oversight by your buddy.
Yep, Sarah and.
So we, we approved the raises, but it oversight on shares and you just. What's the board's pleasure?
Um, I didn't spell that.
Okay.
Here, Ken Martin. Was it five thousand, six hundred and ninety-six and forty-seven? Make a motion and this one hundred point zero zero, one eight, point zero, one, three, point zero, zero. Is that right?
Point zero, zero, zero.
Make a motion to transfer five thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars and forty cents, um, out of financial admin into.
A public health man of yours, Josh.
Exactly what you said.
One hundred, point zero, zero, point one eight, point zero, one, three, zero, 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 point zero, 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 zero.
I agree with you.
I second that.
We have a motion probably second to do a budget adjustment for public health in the amount of five thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars and forty cents by resolution. You ready to discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Well, next is Title twenty-five. So yesterday I was called to come talk to the, or listen in on the board. Um, apparently, uh, the city and the hospital are having problems and getting more frequent Title twenty-five transfers. Some counties would, um, have the, from what I understand, would have the sheriff do it. I brought up, but we brought up the sheriff and said, has it any that? However, um, apparently, one of these title transfers, as long as they're stable, then they can go.
go in like a sheriff's vehicle or a police car. But if they're not, they have to go by ambulance. There's two ambulances, according to the hospital, that Newcastle ambulance or Campbell County ambulance provides. There was a Title 25, I guess a week or two ago, that was airing to Casper. Title 25, as you know, most of the time we get invoices for that, you know, it's required to pay those. That's, my guess is it'll be around $50,000. It could be as low as $30,000, but it could also be as high as 80,000. That's a, that's a whole lot of bill to pay we haven't seen yet. And I don't know that the county can afford someone else making that decision for us and all of a sudden we have a Title 25 bill. They want to get together and look at the ambulance contract. The city says they have a contract. I honestly was not sure, I hadn't seen before, it's been a while, if we have a contract with the ambulance. But my comments to them was, is I was going to bring it to the board, but obviously we don't want those kind of bills sitting on our voucher system, but that bill is coming. It's already been done and get the board's input on it, because I'm not sure we can afford to have four of those in a year. But they're saying that Title 25s have seen a substantial increase and that sometimes they're getting too weak. I look at that a year, but if somebody makes a decision to do four airlifts in a year, that's 200, roughly $200,000. So that's why I'll be.
So when you do a Title 25, you have to get your board through. You make a decision on your.
No, but we also, knowing that the sheriff's department has been down in staff, if we transport our home, if it's safe to recreate some of the, not airlift, I can't lie, but that's why we're going to go transport for the sheriff's office if their staff is, like if they're short staff, in the jail or whatever. So we haven't, we haven't seen what you guys experience. And we're, we're on this side of Gillette, you know what I mean? So we've taken it as far as Casper. I do ask my mayor, I make that phone call with my mayor and my representative visiting Casper, and let them know beforehand. So I have that transparency with my, with the people that I check into, but we make that, I kind of make that decision based on what's best for the person.
So this person, he was not, before he left, he was not stable. They didn't have transportation to take him, so they airlifted him.
Doesn't sound like there's a lot we can do about it.
So I agree with the board commissioners several years ago, and then we're going to talk about Rocky Day service for a minute, that Rocky would take, I mean, the ambulance service would have transported if there's enough need, right? So, and we've, we've rode in the ambulance, you know, we've followed the ambulance, the vehicle, the offer security. We've had multiple patients now, or under no circumstance will the ambulance transport those patients. We will transport those Title 25s to Casper, to Gillette, if there's no natural concern. They often want us to transport that to Rapid City, because there is a significant amount of room over there for those patients. Title 25 does not exist in South Dakota, it's only a Wyoming statute, so we cannot, I do not feel comfortable with that from the back. Now, with that said, last night, a suicidal subject called 911. Officer's in a death, he showed up at the resident, he's completely killed himself, so on and so forth. That's what Title 25 is for, right? There's no crime. But this person is definitely a threat for a suicide. He was brought to the hospital where the hospital refused the Title 25 because he was intoxicated. That brings a whole other problem to the board, because now the officer, he's got to do his best to protect this guy, at least in the middle, we can give him some help or sober up. So now the officer has to charge him with a crime, so we can't hold him. So I see a huge issue there. Potentially, you're telling the officer two o'clock in the morning to pull the charge.
And by me, and also on behalf of what Sheriff Cobart is saying, we were communicating as right before COVID, and I was kind of representing us, Brian and I, on the legislative panel, to rewrite Title 25, because alcohol is usually a catalyst that allows them to feel strong enough to commit suicide or to commit homicide. And so this Title 25 statute, as it stands right now, says to do harm to yourself or others, or potential harm to yourself or others. We had something to go to legislation, but it was deemed unconstitutional, because there was a follow-up claim. And alcohol was not eliminated from the state statute. So even if you were under the influence of alcohol, you could still be Title 25. We have also, on many recent occasions, had the hospital release a Title 25 and demand that we arrest them. I'm not going to do that. That's unconstitutional. They haven't committed a crime, they have not committed a crime. And so what we're seeing is, in one incident, incident in particular, the woman left the hospital while my officer was ex, he had just left and was headed to dispatch to his paperwork. They lifted the Title 25, she ran out into traffic and was injured slightly. And then Newcastle had the Title 25. So this is an ongoing chronic problem in officers, even though basis, beginner officers shouldn't be put in that situation with all of us reporting.
I just want to go right back to dispatch, what Donald was talking about. When it gets to the point where ambulance can transport Title 25 to a proper facility, especially when they got medical institutions like that, you've got a problem with ambulance services. Because now you're having, if a helicopter pilot will transport them? Think about this, if it's too scary for an ambulance and a driver to go down the highway with them, but an ambulance or a helicopter, not a lot of specifics on this, maybe it was something that required airlift, not ambulance. But it was because the ambulance, which is what I'm guessing here, did not want to transport them, but the helicopter pilot was willing to do that, they didn't seem safety concerned. You got a problem with that. And Sheriff, correct, the hospital board wanted the city, and the city brought it to, wanted the city and the commissioners to look at the contracts, because according to Campbell County, this is all listening, just so you know, so I'm not going to get it verbatim, but they wanted us to review the contracts, because Campbell County's saying that they're only required contractually to have ambulances for 911 calls. This patient did not have to be aired, which was the hospital's going, even though they called them, it was the delay and them refusing to take them, because they would have to wait for backup to come according to the contract. So what the hospital is proposing is that, the other part of it is, is they took a picture, just to make the story complete. They're, Roger always transported those patients, always, and that's why we never ran across this problem before, according to the city and the hospital. They took a picture of Campbell County's yard, hospital yard, and there was 10 ambulances sitting there. One of them had Newcastle ambulance on it. They're only using two and refusing to take these patients, because they're saying contractually they're only required for the 911 calls. They would like to see us, they've already approached the city for more money. I'm assuming they're going to do that to us a budget time too, but they would like to see it so that it's part of their contract, that they have to transport these Title 25s. The other suggestion we brought up, they brought it up, and in fact, that there's still an ambulance up here, I believe, and there was maybe a way that they could supply staff for that ambulance and use it as the, like Campbell County continued doing what it's doing, but have this backup ambulance to transport these Title 25s instead of airlifting because of the extreme costs that was involved. Those were all ideas that were thrown out. Like I said, I told them I'd bring it to the board, because we can't afford too many of those.
Wouldn't be giving the ambulance $20,000, no, like, sneak us. We don't have a lot of teeth, we can enroll a pain $20,000.
What we, even though we supplement the budget with that, we still build some, you know?
American private service, so pretty much, um, you have to do this.
$15,000.
$15,000.
And the city pays $100,000, and they've asked for $10,000 more from them, according to what I saw yesterday. So I don't know if they're going to ask for us, but it is a minimal amount, I believe, I believe still give money to the, up to the end, suit, I think, or be able to. I don't know if that's a possibility, but I just, I know all of us don't want to see those kind of bills come across, not assigned form.
We give 25, they use the extra to try to find more. People are helping the service.
I don't know, it's $20,000.
Well, that will have to stay up though. That also will be found out, you know, I don't know when the. It's going to be out there. Can't, we can't hear myself. Okay.
Next up is.
Cameron, can you come up here, please?
You're for Cal State.
Like you listen, this is May 3rd, 2022.
Second, she allowed the district attorney to engage. As legal counsel. I mean, this is it. All of the finger, please say aye. All of the close, say aye. Motion, that's fast. Thank you. Thank you. Chair, please finish this up.
This is an open meeting. I don't know. A big boy, please.
Good.
That was the out person, our official meeting last year. You made a clear. Yes.
Um, I never, I tried to be polite as I could too, and I never pointed you out exclusively as a reason for the meeting's statement. It was just a reminder to each other, remind people to be polite in court.
So did the chair person address me?
In what form?
In that form. The chair person heard me and told me that I disrupted.
You were sitting about where that podium is, and I was about three feet from that microphone, and you were louder than me in that podium and I recorded.
So my question is, so did the chair person address me?
This is vice chair, and I assume you applied.
You were the vice chair?
Yeah.
For anybody in receipts?
You stood up and blurted it out. I don't have a video recording stand. I'm asking you, how did I defame you in that format? It kind of appears to me that all you're doing is an attempted to defame me.
All right. Well, that meeting was following us on a special session.
Executive session.
Executive session.
We came out with an executive session back into.
But you weren't in public at that point.
We're in it to it on the record.
I'm in it?
Yes. Do you want me to play it again?
Yeah. It came out of.
Engage.
What's happening to engage?
As legal counsel.
Discussion.
All of the member, please say aye. All of the close, say aye. Motion, that's fast.
You're not in there?
But I heard this. All right.
As legal counsel. Chair?
This is an open meeting. Said, yeah, I know, I know.
Oh, that's the hearing, so you know, listeners, he said it's an open meeting.
Mind using your hands up? Here, are your arms?
Flying lapses.
Because, oh, like you staring in front of me and threatening me with your arm at the last minute.
Flying lapses.
Not like it's your, you looked very open at this.
Last meeting. Last meeting, you made your statement with Mr. Todd. It was very striking. In what way? Just your tone of voice and your comments. In what way? In certain way.
And on the way found out.
Okay.
All right. That takes care of that. One last thing, the executive session. B4.
Does anybody have the, right? Does anybody have two with it in, we need to get all done.
Oh, I don't, I don't.
I don't have a card.
What's the number? Hospital, anything?
Yeah.
Is it, is it bad or is it okay?
So, noise too.
A-I-I. And litigation is A-I-I. Thank you all.
Is there a motion here? I make a motion. I see.
Kevin goes to talk the second, goes to executive session.